I have this statement that I have to read because of the governor's directive. My name is Rick Smith. I'm chairman of the zoning commission. This meeting of the zoning commission will take place through Zoom remote technology. Just told you on the chair, the host of the webinar is Larry Dunn, alternate zoning commission member. Anyone speaking should state their names prior to speaking each time. The participants in this meeting will be the commission members, elected alternate members, staff and the commission's counsel if he joins us. Participants who would like to comment on an item or share a screen item should indicate by raising, using the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen or by raising your hand visually in front of the screen so we can see you wave. After the raised hand has been detected, the participant will have the opportunity to speak after being called upon by the chairman. Participants all should mute their microphones until called upon. Procedurally to offer a motion or second emotion commissioners should physically raise their hand and be acknowledged by the chairman. To vote commissioners will be called upon individually by the chair. Public can participate in the meeting as spectators. There will be no peak public speaking section of the meeting. All participants must identify themselves before speaking each time they speak. Members of the public can also submit comments by writing to the commission after the meeting for consideration on any item discussed today. Finally, recording of tonight's meeting. Website within seven days of the meeting. You all have gotten the agenda and that's how you knew to be on the meeting. So I'm going to call us to order. It's 10:03 and Lynn is here. That's good. And I'd like everybody to identify themselves, members or alternates and staff, starting on the upper left, Larry. Up, you're muted, Larry.
Alright, Larry Dunn, alternate.
Jennifer Johnson.
Commissioner.
I think everybody has a different grid.
Oh, I see. Okay, everybody's picture array is different. Okay, so we have myself, Nip and Larry so far.
Jennifer Johnson, almost staff.
Lynn Marshall, alternate.
And Lynn Marshall, alternate Dana.
Dana Oviette, member.
Blake Powell, member.
Christine.
Christine Maguire, recording secretary.
Okay, so that's our two alternates and our five members and two staff onboard. Okay, that was the call to order and identification. The public statement. Okay, then we can jump right into the agenda. We wanted to have a full discussion of goals and objectives that we've talked about from time to time over the last year and a half. But the commission felt it was important to get something more formalized and consistent so that as we begin to develop management measures to deal with what we think are the problems, they track back to goals and objectives. So we don't lose sight of what we are trying to accomplish. In that light, last week and a half ago, we called for members and alternates to submit what they, their vision of what goals and objectives should be. Four did. You've received, the members and alternates have that. And it was also attached to the agenda that was posted on the town's website. If you got at the agenda that way. So beyond that, then I'd like to hear commissioners and alternates talk about how they feel about what they read. Okay. Let me get the ball rolling then. First of all, I appreciate the effort. And second, I noticed there was a lot of similarity, a lot of common views across the four. And also there were some additional things, things that I totally missed that other people caught and it went that way. What I had done. Well, I'm gonna angle again, fishing term. If anybody would like to talk about what they read as the four submissions. And then I'd like to propose a way to deal with them. So again, anybody. After 10:00 in the morning, it's got, can't be too early. Dana, thank you.
I have two comments. One is what Lynn alluded to. And I think she, both she and I heard John Casey say that if we designed our goals around what we're trying to protect, then we would be more easily, we could be more easily defend what we had done in case there was a challenge by the public. So that's, that's my first point. I think, I thought the goal, that, that the point that she was making was a good one. And the only thing I want to say is, I think in the past, we discussed goals, but they've gotten conflated with lower level action items which would support the mission statement of the goals. And so I think when we discuss this stuff, what we want to do is try and keep it to high level mission statement and goals rather than how we would actually implement, implement the goals, if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you. Others? If I could paraphrase that, I had much the same thought. Leave management measures where they belong and leave goals and objectives as the things we hope to accomplish. Is that fair? Yeah, okay. Others? Lynn?
Okay. Just one thing that I had left out of my list was that they see now, I had left out supporting some short-term rental activity to help people, to help people retain their homes.
Just a minute Lynn, on that one, did you see that that point was covered by someone else's submission?
Yes, so I just agreed, I just agreed with that.
I'm gonna, just let the item say, be accommodating of time.
Alright.
Leave all offers aside if point is in there and you're satisfied, doesn't need anymore.
I want to explain number nine, because that isn't anybody else's what I have. Encouraging supportive local businesses during the fall and spring months, and especially during the winter months, which are their slow times. The reason that I brought that one up is that when, when, when you look at places like host compliance that do the monitoring and they actually can help people write their regulations. One of the things they do in terms of short-term rentals, they look at the disadvantages of them and the benefits of them to a community. The disadvantages, we know, but what are the advantages? And what they talk of mostly about the advantages are in terms of economic development and in revenue to the town. And they're talking a lot about collecting taxes. Well, we're not collecting taxes, and I think the commissioners have all been in agreement that this is not to be a money-making activity, defeats one of the primary purposes. So, so is there any economic development to look at as benefit? And so this one encouraging supportive local businesses like during their slow times. That I think would be the one economic benefit that I could see for Noank.
Others? Yep. Nip, you're muted, I think.
Now, I, I had raised my hand at the beginning of this session to make sure that everybody knew how to exercise the raise hand feature. If we're going to use the raise hand feature, people need to go to the participant button at the bottom of the screen. Click on that, it opens up a list of participants. And in the lower right-hand corner of that screen, there's the raise hand button. Just wanted to tell the participants, we should all be on the same page on that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, other commissioners, alternates, comments on goals, any, any of the submissions? Oh, you know, the other thing we're not doing, I just failed again. Rick Smith, we need for the record to identify ourselves each time. We can see our names, but somebody hearing the record, I'm not sure they do. And that's one of the governor's edicts. So let's start doing that more religiously. Thanks. Blake?
Yeah, Blake Powell. So, you know, these goals are all good and we can keep talking about them. Keep adding to them. I think there's a large amount of consensus on what we're trying to achieve. And I think there's a large amount of consensus on the fact that a certain amount of short-term rentals is good for the community, assuming the renters are well behaved. But too much is not a good thing, even if the renters are well behaved. And so we're trying to find this fine line in between. But, you know, my goal is that in spite of everything we have written here that people have submitted, which is all good stuff, that we come up with something that's going to be acceptable to the whole community, both end of the spectrum. And what I've heard from the public during the public meetings is very clearly that what we had done, what we proposed before was way too complicated and too involved and unenforceable. And I think that what we need to come up with, and Lynn and some of the others touched on this too, but regulations that are easily enforceable with the staff and the organization that we already have. And that are going to be acceptable by the community. Otherwise, this is all just a large waste of time if we try to put something together that's even more complicated than what we started with.
Good, thanks. Nip? Yep?
Yeah.
When you speak, put your, turn your blue thing off so I can keep track of who's up.
Okay.
Blake and Nip.
Tanner responding to Blake. I think we heard from a minority, a very vocal minority at the hearing. Basically, we heard from people who are operating the short-term rentals and they want to be able to continue to do so with a minimum of oversight by us. I think there is a silent majority in the community, silent, at least in terms of attendance at the public hearing and the workshops, that are very concerned about preserving the residential character of the village and the negative impact of multiple short-term rentals. So I, in drafting, in setting our goals and drafting the regulations, I am going to be very conscious of trying to think about what that silent majority wants as opposed to what the focal minority that we heard from.
Okay, others? Thanks. Dana?
Sorry Dana Oviette, I agree with Nip. If you, if you try and go for something that's acceptable to everyone, then you'll never reach any agreement whatsoever, because there are always going to be in zoning winners and losers, always. You can't avoid that. And in terms of being enforceable, I mean, I've kind of done a U-turn here in a way in my thinking about it, because enforceable for zoning seems like it's 90% due to complaint. And so to reach the pinnacle that everything, every single solitary thing we do must be capable of being enforced very, very efficiently is also a pipe dream.
Okay, others? I'm, I'm gonna suggest something here that actually one of our able staff members put the thought in my mind, and the more I thought of it, I thought it was worthwhile to try. We got the four submissions. We've already talked about there are some good redundancies. I don't want redundancies to sound like disparagement. Common thinking across the four. And it occurred to me and that good staff member who I will not name to protect the reputations of the innocent, some consolidation might have been in order. Where we could begin to, to winnow it down into the common denominators and all the other. So I took a crack at that. And it turned three pages into one and a half. And I didn't leave, I left one thing of Larry's out, well, that I'll be happy to, to explain if, if he wants to. But everything else I put in and just put it together in a different place. And then I put the initials of the person and the number of their, their goal or objective after the sentence or the paragraph, so that you could track back to your own comments and see where the ones in the consolidated document came from. And having said that, do you want to see that? I have Larry prepared to put it on the screen. If you think it'll be helpful, we'll put it up there and you can read through it and see what you think. Otherwise, we may be bouncing back between four somewhat dissimilar presentations. And what we really need to do is get the common denominator. So how do you feel about that commissioners, alternates? Lynn?
Yes, I agree that that's a good idea, a good way forward. And I just wanted to, did I say Lynn Marshall? So I think that's a good way forward. I just wanted to say something briefly for Dana's comment. Yes, I do think that it's possible to have enforceable regulations. We don't have enforceable regulations, there's no point in having them. And they're never going to be perfectly enforceable. Nothing's perfect. But, but we can get most of it. Most of it would be enforceable. Some people are going to slip under the wire sometimes, we know that, but, but we can get most of it. Then we do it with our, I think we, we have to get some of the, you know, the software monitoring companies involved. But with their help, I think we could do it.
Okay, others? On seeing this revised consolidated document? Dana?
Dana, I like the idea.
Okay. All right, Larry, before you put it up, once a document's on the screen, if you remember, you're going to have a harder time seeing all people. But up in the upper left corner of your screen, the speaker view box, you can pick how to array the speakers so that they're all down the right side of the, the screen. And it's, it's like on, on your computer with moving things around. If you want to move that over a little, just hold down, click on the, the top bar and you can move the whole block of images farther off to the side, or you can move it to the left if you want. You have a variety of ways under your control to still see the people, but also see the document. So having said that, Larry, if you would put that up. You can also drag the corners of the thing and make that box bigger, although I'm not seeing myself doing that.
It was bigger to begin with. Is there a way that Larry can make that, that screen fan out? Hard to see, it's very small.
Hard to see, what is very small, the images of the people or the document?
No, that's, that's, yeah, thank you, Larry.
Is, isn't it Tanner, is there a way for us to scroll the document or do we rely on Larry?
Yeah, we have to rely on Larry, Rick Smith. As you're all getting towards the end of that, you'll note the important considerations at the bottom. Those were Lynn's suggestions and I think, yeah, in all cases. Not for any kind of a documentary presentation. In other words, not in a long list of goals, but things that we should keep in mind, which was the way she had portrayed that. She had three others at the beginning of hers, but she specifically said not necessarily intended for the final document. So I just put those all together in this important consideration section. And that was Rick Smith again, who failed again to identify himself. Has everybody finished reading? Okay. Do you, would you like to pursue this consolidated version? Do you think it's beneficial rather than working with the four? So we know what document we're working from. I see Lynn nodding. I see Beth nodding, Dana nodding. Okay. So let's do that. Now. My view, okay, just the way I think we should approach this is just go sequentially. Write down, anybody have comments on the goal? Anybody have comments on the objectives? And, and do it that way. And see if there's anything in here that someone would like to suggest, we maybe put it in a different part of the document, or maybe on reflection, it's not necessary. In other words, can we make this list smaller? If not, then that's the list. But I think we ought to give ourselves the opportunity. I have a few questions on a few of them, but I don't want to jump in too soon. So what's your pleasure? Okay. All right, I'll be happy to start. I like, huh? Your hand is up. My apologies. Nip Tanner. And Lynn? After Nip.
I would like a couple of comments. One, goal number B, be protect and preserve the residential character of Noank. I think we need to discuss at the beginning, if we are going to characterize it that broadly, or if we are going to recognize that the village, the RV district is a subset of the fire district. And as such, we need to talk about that. And once we finish that conversation, decide the extent to which we want to extend things to the entire fire district. I think to treat this as a one-size-fits-all is a mistake. The character of the neighborhoods in the fire district varies significantly from neighborhood to neighborhood. And I think we need to recognize that. That was my point number one. Point number two, my impression is Rick, that you've listed the objectives more or less in descending order by the frequency with which they were mentioned. I hope when we get done going through this, we list them in priority order rather than how many times they were mentioned. That we make it very clear under objectives, what is more important, or one of the more important ones. Thank you.
Okay. Brief response, actually, I didn't order them that way, but I have no objection to what you said. So when we get all done and we're happy with them, we should put them in a way that we're comfortable seeing them. And if that's most important first, or if it's similar things aggregated, we can do that after we're happy with the language. That's a good comment. Thanks. Lynn Marshall? You're muted Lynn.
Okay, Lynn Marshall, and I don't know how to take my hand down either. So I, I think on this one, the objective is discouraging properties functioning like hotels. And then it looks like the buy discouraging acquisition would be the method for, you know, a method for doing that, rather than an objective.
You're talking about NC1, correct?
I'm on C1, yes.
One, okay.
And, and I think that you can still, you know, even, even if you don't have acquisition of houses to be used specifically or primarily for an STR purpose, you can still have an issue with clusters of short-term rentals, so that someone no longer has neighbors.
I'm sorry, I, Rick Smith, I thought you were going to follow on with Nip's comment. And you went to an entirely different one. So if you wouldn't mind, I didn't ask for that, you should have.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, hold your thought on that one for a moment. I think we had to try and deal with each suggestion.
Yes, yes, that's fine.
Before we leave it.
Yes.
And Nip had suggested preserve the residential character of Noank, might want to be changed to put a, a different or a greater emphasis on the RV district, the village district. I'll get you in just one second. I just want to tee it up, or Nip can. Do you have suggested words, Nip, that would, would capture what you'd like that to say?
One possibility, Nip Tanner, one possibility, just off the top of my head, would be to insert after Noank comma, primarily the RV district comma. And so forth, just focus on, on that.
Okay.
But not exclusively.
Yeah. Everybody comfortable with that as a solution?
I am not.
You're not?
Sorry.
Dana and then Lynn?
This violates the principle that I stated right up front. Because it gets down in the weeds too much. I'm looking at a statement of purpose from, I think it's Portland. And I don't know if you can see, I'll hold it up. It's one paragraph. And it's like a mission statement in a business. It states upfront the overall goal that we're trying to accomplish. And it, it does have the fact that we want to protect Noank or Portland, whatever it is. But it doesn't start to delineate at that point which sections of Portland should be given an exception. And, and so all of a sudden, now we're going to start discussing things that are more actionable, rather than things that we can all agree on right off the bat. And I think if we go that way, it's And I think if we go that way, it's going to be a problem.
I think that, Lynn Marshall, I think that most of what we're doing does apply to all of the fire district. And I think we need, in order to try to keep this as simple as possible and as overreaching as possible, we need to do that. There are, there are, there may be some places in here, probably will be, where there will be some differences that can then be broken out, so we can stay and keep in mind the whole time should we differentiate, but I think that's, I think that's farther down, I think these overriding goals and objectives. I mean, obviously, some of them, you know, for economic benefit, obviously, in the residential districts, they don't, they don't have, they don't have that outside of the village and the, and the commercial districts, but I think overall, we're better off if we can go through this just once and break out as we need to along the way.
Larry Dunn, oh, Rick, are you muted?
Oh, okay. So Lynn, you would advocate for leaving the language as it is? Is that correct? I don't know why Lynn isn't on that. All right, Larry?
Larry, Larry Dunn, just a comment is co-host, I can't raise my hand mechanically because I'm the co-host and you're the co-host, so I gotta do this.
All right.
As, you know, I did a survey of the Crosswinds areas, about 54 homes, and it was a split 50-50. So there was an interest in managing short-term rentals by the 50-50 rule. And when you get into the details of it, there's obviously more off-street parking by the nature of the physical aspects of the lot size. Therefore, I think the generic one I would support, keep it as Noank. And then as you get into the specifics, what I come up with is off-street parking, for example, how many houses within 200 feet, which has to be notified, et cetera, et cetera. You're going to kind of default more restrictive in the village by definition. So I kind of like the more generic one also with what Dana says, I think it provides a better legal basis for surviving any challenges.
Okay, thanks. Rick Smith? If this was a bunch of kids, they would say that position is trending. Nip, are you persuaded that we could leave it as it is and we'll pick up the point you make at a later date as we talk about measures by different areas?
Well, I have a concern at this point. We've heard from one commission member, have not heard from two commission members, we've heard from two alternates. I think as we make these decisions, the important thing is everybody gets heard, but I think the primary votes should go to the five commission members. They're the ones that are going to be responsible for the end product, and I think this is an important decision. I think it needs to be made by the five commission members.
Yeah, I was hoping that would be a discussion for a different day. Right now, let's just try and get ideas and get a sense of where people are. If, if we have to cross that bridge and talk about whether alternates should vote or not, I don't want that to bog down a goals discussion.
Okay, Nip Tanner again, but I still, I'd like to hear from Blake and Beth.
I agree, I agree. Beth?
I would just say, I agree with Dana. I, I understand what Nip is saying, but I think that the goal has to be to make this as simplistic and as possible, and also I don't necessarily believe that just because you live outside the village, you wouldn't want, you know, certain restrictions on short-term rental and certain protections afforded against the conduct we're trying to slate again. So I think that breaking that out at this point probably isn't a good idea.
Okay, Blake?
Well, I mean, I feel that the objectives, the goals, rather, which we've been kind of thrown around interchangeably, objectives, purpose, goals, there are differences, but I think these objectives should be high level enough that applies to the whole fire district. How they get enacted certainly could be different from district to district. I think we need to identify with these goals, you know, what the real problem is that we're trying to solve. And I don't think you're going to see the same problem in different districts. The other thing I'd point out too, that we shouldn't lose sight of is, you know, our zoning regulations, they do have a purpose already. A lot of things we're trying to achieve here are called out specifically in that purpose, so are we going to change our zoning regulations in page one to reflect all these new objectives and goals?
My, Beth?
The other thing is Blake was, Beth Steel, the other thing that Blake was talking, and then that made me think about the conversation that we had with John a few weeks ago, and what he was saying was, you know, if you're going to limit things to different properties or treat different properties differently, then you have to worry about an equal protection argument, and by treating properties outside the village different than properties inside the village, maybe that opens us up to some sort of equal protection argument, and I don't think it's necessary to, to open ourselves up to that.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I want to answer Blake's, the other question he raised. My opinion is no, we're not, a lot of this stuff is to guide us in our activities. All of this stuff won't, in my view, show up in the Noank zoning ordinances. They're basically justifications for why we adopt whatever we adopt as ordinances. So you could call it boilerplate or just the front-end guidance. So the answer to the question is, I don't see this process as amending all of Noank zoning ordinances to conform to this one. That would be the cart and the horse. I don't know if that gives you a little more comfort on the question you raised.
Well, that is Blake Powell. I'm not sure, I'm just throwing it out there for discussion, but it seems to me that you know, these goals are going to be tied to whatever we enact, so they should be, I think, included in the regulation.
Rick Smith? If, if you look at the rest of the Blue Book, the whole Noank zoning ordinance, none of those other provisions have this much front end to them. They have the measures that people are required to obey, which would be, you know, just the ordinance, you can do this and not that. We're focused on this one because it's such a, you know, I I envision it, it looks like the magnified version of the coronavirus. It's a big ball of wax with a whole bunch of different things sticking out of it, and at the end of the day, our ordinances are going to be all of those things sticking out, but not have, you know, a lot of the reason why we did things, the ordinances are the rules, just what we do. And you can have a supporting document and justification, but that's kind of separate. That's my view. Nip, and then Dana.
Yeah, I just point out that the section of the regs that we spend most of our time dealing with is architectural design review, and it has a very long preamble explaining why that was added to the regulations. You know, a few years ago, many years after the adoption of the original regulations. So it's not inconsistent that we would have a preamble here to make it very clear why we're doing this.
Okay, others? Dana, yes?
Yeah, just to reiterate Nip's point, I've got the zoning regulations in front of me, and the purpose is a paragraph about that long, which is aspirational. It's the best scenario, and it starts out, "The purpose of this ordinance includes, but is not limited to following, to promote the safety, health, general welfare, convenience, and so forth and so on." It doesn't get down to specific yet, it doesn't get down into specifics. It just creates an aspirational best-case scenario that we're shooting for. And I think that's what, that this should be as well. These, all these should be pared down into a one-paragraph statement that, that everybody agrees with.
Okay, so before we bog down too far, I saw a majority that said leave B the way it's worded. Is that how everybody else saw it? Okay, let's do that and keep moving our way through it and, and leave all of this in, and we'll decide what needs to be in an ordinance at the end of the day, not now. Lynn, you were up with C1, and could you recap that for us again? You gotta be unmuted. Okay, could you start over, Lynn? You were muted.
Yes, so that was combining a couple of them into one, and I don't think that, so when you look at, say discouraging properties functioning like hotels, frequent turnover, clusters of short-term rentals by discouraging acquisition of houses, I guess I may be getting down in the weeds, as you know, I can do pretty quickly. Clusters of short-term rentals can happen as a problem outside of, of houses that are acquired specifically for short-term rentals. You could have a lot of people who are here one month a year or two months a year that surround a property that, where they no longer have neighbors, so it's not the only way you would have a problem with clusters of STRs. That is a point, we can go on now.
Let me suggest a fix. This is Rick Smith. Are you suggesting I put the clusters of STRs in the wrong place? Should, could we move that? Yeah, okay. That was your suggestion, Nip, so maybe as we're going down through here, we might find a better place to have that concept fit. Okay. Were you okay, Lynn, with the rest of how the number one word was worded, because I took two similar, okay, all right. Okay, anybody else commenting on C1? Blake and then Nip?
Actually, I went down to B, but
Okay, hold, hold that thought and I'm sorry, you want to go back to B?
Yeah, Blake Powell. I had a question about B and a number of things that are in the paragraph C. In B, we say that we're protecting property values. And there's a number of things in paragraph C that are referred to, you know, people making money and offsetting property taxes and things like that. My question is maybe for John Casey, but I have thought, I have heard him say, and others though, that those types of issues really are not, they don't belong in zoning regulations. I mean, is it the purpose of zoning, it certainly doesn't say anything in our current zoning regulations that the purpose has anything to do with preserving property values. And I'm not too sure that's something that we really should be getting into, but I would like to hear his opinion on if that's valid for us to explicitly consider, or if that's just going to open us up to challenges.
Yeah, John has not seen these yet, and Rick Smith, and he will, before we go finalizing things, to go out to the public before we ever have a public hearing, so yeah, that's a, that's a perfectly valid point. And that's a different way of getting things out, but this is just our first cut at what people suggested, and I didn't want to be the one to leave anything out, so if there's a majority that feels based on what Blake said, that should be out of there, and we should take out any reference to those things even before we talk to John, that's the will of the majority. I won't stand in the way one way or another. Whether you want to leave it in and see what he says, or whether you want to take it out now because it makes you uncomfortable, that's a decision for the group to make. Blake, you're still lit, would you like to comment? Okay.
No, I'm not still lit, but
Lynn, Lynn?
Lynn Marshall, I wondered if our staff could do a quick check through our current, the current zoning document to see if indeed that that is the case, that there's no reference to property values. I think perhaps there is.
Okay, that would, Rick Smith, that would argue for leaving it in for the moment with the caveat that we'll have to, we can't do that now in the course of this meeting, it's a book. But we can do that probably at the same time we talk to John. So if it's the will of the group, we'll leave it in for now with the place marker that we may want to take it out later. Does that satisfy everybody? Okay, I don't see disagreement. All right. So Blake, that was on B. Nip?
Go back to C1, are we ready to do that?
Yes.
Nip Tanner, I think we're we've combined two items in this which are related, but not necessarily. You could have a property functioning like a hotel that was not an investment property. It could be somebody who is there one month during the summer, but the rest of the summer, they hope to rent it every week or multiple times every week. So I think, I think it's not, it's makes it unclear to combine the two. I think they should be separate.
Okay, everybody agree with that? Okay, so I'll, I'll do that, okay. Any other comments on C1? Okay, C2? Yep?
I, I agree with it as written. I'm wondering whether we should add long-term rentals in there, or whether we want to list long-term rentals separately, but the same idea to discourage the replacement of long-term rental properties with short-term rentals.
That, Rick Smith, that may have been an editorial omission. I'm not, I can't remember frankly how I got to that one. It may have been in there, and by saying permanently occupied residences, that covered a single-family residence that someone lives in all the time and also a long-term rented property. I don't know if that fixes the concern or whether you want to add it in, because permanently occupied can be either.
I just don't think it's clear. If we're really trying to preserve and encourage, this is Nip Tanner, if we're going to, if we're trying to preserve and encourage long-term rentals, I don't see any downside to specifically managing that, mentioning that.
So discouraged replacement of permanently occupied residents, residences, or long-term rented properties? Is that, okay, how does everybody feel about that? Larry, could you do me a housekeeping chore? Can you disable the chat feature on everybody's, every participant's screen? That's distracting and there's no public comment. Zoom allows it, but our zoning rules do not. So...
I agree, I was just replying to that effect. And I thought I did disable chat, I'll get on it.
Discourage, discouraged replacement of permanently occupied residences or long-term rented properties. Okay, everybody agree with that change? I don't see disagreement, so we'll do that. Any other comments on C2? Seeing none, C3? Does... I'm reading, this is Rick Smith, I'm reading these with a fresh mind now. Is 2, would you guys consider 2 as somewhat redundant to number 3? I mean, the only difference really is by owner-occupied houses or long-term rentals, which was Nip's point, instead of permanently occupied residences in number 2. Is that the only difference? Is 3 sufficient that we could discard 2? That would be my question. Larry? And then Beth?
Yeah, I look at that and I think 2 is actually simpler and more understandable. But I agree, there is an overlap between the two. And you know, my default position is get the simplest possible objective.
Okay, if number 2 has the added language that Nip recommended about long-term rentals after permanently occupied residences, are you comfortable with that instead of 3? Or is the front end of 3 also necessary, the first sentence? I mean, it just seemed like opposite ends of the same sentiment. Nip? Oh, I'm sorry, Beth first, then Nip.
I just want to say I am comfortable with that. I think they're redundant and we should keep 2 with Nip's added language.
Keep number C2 with Nip's language. Long-term rentals. Any disagreement with that? Okay, Nip, you good with that?
Yeah, this is Nip Tanner, yeah, I'm fine with that. Under 3, I, you know, I question the language that somehow these regulations would increase, encourage an increase in the proportion of owner-occupied houses. I don't know how we're doing that. I think by regulation, we discourage things we don't like. And I think that's much clearer if we focus on that.
Okay, I would propose that consistent with Ben and Beth and Nip, if we strike 3 and add the long-term rental language to 2, is everybody comfortable with that? Okay, we'll do that. Okay, C4? Anybody want to comment on C4? Dana? You're muted, Dana.
Okay, Dana Oviet. Could that be increased on my screen? I can barely read that. It was better before. If Larry could possibly increase the size of the text, that'd be great.
How's that?
Eric, did that repaint? I increased it to 300%.
Yeah, I mean, it's clear to me here, I can read it. Dana, can you read that? Okay? Yeah, okay, he's good. So comment on C4? Nip?
Just a minor editing. I would suggest deleting the word "the prevalence of" and just discourage activities that interfere with this enjoyment, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, everybody agree with that? Okay, I see no disagreement. Okay, good. Anything else on C4? Don't see anybody. C5? Blake?
Blake Powell, so this is an example of one of the issues I was talking about before, where I'm not too sure if economic issues like this belong in our zoning regulations. I mean, I don't disagree with the point, but I'm just not sure that we should be designing regulations around it.
The whole concept or the front end where it says the expenses of or the back end where it says becoming money-making propositions? I mean, is it, is it the concept or is it how it's worded?
No, it's the whole concept.
Dana?
Dana Oviet, I kind of agree with Blake. I'm having a hard time convincing myself that we need to put this in as a mission, as part of the mission statement. Again, I'm referring back to this mission statement, the purpose for the Portland short-term rental regulations. And they say, "To balance the desire of property owners to rent their residential properties to short-term rental guests for compensation against the desire of residents to preserve the traditional peace and quiet of their residential neighborhood." So it's much more general and another short-term regulation, but I'm not sure it should even be in there necessarily.
Would you be more comfortable with it if it ended in the second line after the word "met"? Because that's one of the things that we heard right at the outset of this is that taxes are high, some people, you know, they, somebody talked about, you know, the elderly person who lives in a house and has a room or a suite to rent and they can defray some of their taxes and therefore stay in knowing. I think that was the genesis of how this thing came out the way it is. So I guess my question is, is that part of the sentence more acceptable? Or do you think the whole thing shouldn't be there? And Dana, I think you were the last one that commented, but you and Blake had both had the same point. So does that satisfy your need more? Dana?
I think the way you put it in originally in your short-term draft, I can't locate it right now, was pretty good because it was more general. And I'm trying, I'm trying to find it.
Yeah. Trying to find documents that aren't yet in the record is probably not worthwhile. So let's hold that for now. Nip, you were next, and then Larry.
In terms of whether or not it's okay to mention the financial aspects of this, it seemed to me that the draft that Dana read for Portland did that. It recognized that they were trying to balance the competing objectives of property owners who want some financial help by renting their property with protecting the neighborhood for their neighbors. So, and that's very broad, but it recognizes that there's a balancing act between economic interests and residential character that we're trying to achieve. So I'm okay with any language that recognizes that we're trying to achieve such a balance.
Yeah, and I would add support, Rick Smith, I would add support to that point that I think it's, it's one of the earliest things we heard and maybe we can say it differently, but I would hate to lose that concept unless John Casey said, you know, on reflection, you know, there's a legal problem with that. I have not heard that in 18 months, so I would be surprised. But I can either look at other language or end that sentence after objections, objectives herein are met. Maybe that takes a little bit of the onerous sense out of that. Was that Beth that I saw hand? Oh, I'm sorry, Larry was first. I think Larry was first and then Beth.
Yeah, Larry Dunn, thanks. I agree with the view that it's important to have it in there, certainly as an objective for creating the zoning rights. It, the actual language of the zoning regs is for a future time. I also agree that, again, you got 2, not conflicting, but somewhat at odd statements. And I would support leaving it after "met," deleting the other part. I think it's a different point and I think we need to be crisp in the objectives and think about making that as a separate decision on the money-making propositions part. I think it's covered elsewhere anyway.
Beth?
I would agree with what Larry just said. And I would just add, I don't know the legality of putting it in there or taking it out, although what Nip said made sense to me. But I was also looking at, early on, Nip had provided an extract from the Shelter Island regulations that involve short-term rental. And those regulations were very heavily driven on use for allowing homeowners to defer costs. And that's a big issue for me. So I would say, let's keep number 5, end it after the word "met" and move on.
Okay, any disagreement? That's a trending decision. Dana?
Again, I think it should be more general. I think what we want is to say there should be a balance between the desire for short-term renters and, and, and the rest of the community. But I don't think we should necessarily say anything about the expenses of properties or refer to that at all. I think that we should have a statement saying we should balance, just like Nip said. I think he put it very well.
Okay. Okay. I have a sense of what needs to be done in here, but I can't figure it out right now on the fly. So maybe that's one, we'll take another pass of the wand at it and see how people like it. Nip?
Yeah, Nip Tanner, I'm okay with the edit that you suggested for 5. I was just making a comment that if the majority of the commission members wanted to water it down, that something can still be left in there that reflects this balancing, you know, paraphrasing what they've done in Portland. So I'm leaving, I'm comfortable with leaving it in your hands to figure out where to go with this.
All right. Okay. Any disagreement with that? Okay, C6? I don't think I mentioned all of those initials and numbers. Those are to track back to your original contributions. And as you can see, this one had a diversity of, everybody had something on this subject. So this does look a little bit like a camel. And the two, Rick Smith, the two things that it marries are the efficiency of those administrative activities and that the cost be borne by the permitted business and not the fire district. Beth and then Larry?
I think that for number 6, maybe we could take out some of the wording to just make it more concise. And I would suggest that we take out the terms consistent with the limited personnel available for such purposes and also take out and not by the fire district. That's necessary. And I'm not really sure, when we talk about permitted businesses, maybe we should say permitted short-term rentals. I don't know. That's my suggestion.
Okay, any disagreement with that? Omit consistent with, through, for such purposes. And omit and not by the fire district. And change permitted businesses to short-term rental operations. How's that? Jen, I hope you're taking good notes on this because at the same time, thank you. All right. Okay, everybody comfortable with that? Nip?
Yeah, I just, in our discussions, in our meetings, multiple commission members expressed serious reservations about us trying to do anything that might turn out to be a heavy lift, given the perception that the zoning enforcement officer has limited time to support whatever we decide to do. And I feel strongly that we should figure out what we want to do and figure out how we'd like to see it enforced and not be strongly limited by concerns over the practicality of what we want, given our current administrative setup. If we need to go beyond what we currently have in order to achieve our goals, I think we should be open to at least talking about that.
Anybody else? Larry?
Yeah, this is Larry Dunn. Lynn and I, you know, have been reviewing a number of what's called the conformance and compliance reporting ones. And the net is, is that I think what's going to fall to the CZO is the management of complaints. So, you know, when we get through it, and I think I said this before, is you kind of bounce back and forth, you see what you want to do and then you test whether or not it's enforceable and/or you can actually do it in an economical way. So I'm okay with the way it is. I think we're pretty comfortable that we can get a fairly cheap enforcement one. The unanswered question in my mind is the number of complaints and the time, you know, to Nip's point, the time it's going to take to manage the complaints. I think the rest of it is pretty straightforward. I know Lynn might want to weigh in because she's been reviewing some of the software that's out there as well.
Okay, Lynn?
Lynn Marshall, yes, I mean, I think, I think that's something that we need to pay attention to. Yes, I mean, I think that's something that we need to pay attention to in drafting regulations, is what does it take to enforce it? Because some things will be easier to enforce than others. I think that we, I agree that we do need to be open to having additional, I don't think it's going to be possible to do it, because there is extra work here with no additional hours, but I think that, I can't tell you how many hours, because we don't know yet how many people would be having short-term rentals, so is it going to be a lot of activity? Or is it going to be a small activity? Until we don't know, until we know that, you don't really know. But I think that we could have, you know, say Jen, if she was willing to work some extra hours each week to help that, like help somebody get their application in if they're having trouble with it, those kinds of things, that that could be doable, and then again, that that shouldn't be a huge expense and it could be borne by the operators, but we don't want to fence ourselves in. We need to look at what the actual cost would be to actually run it, and so, but I think we need to keep that in mind throughout. That's it.
Okay. So that one with the change in the language still says efficiently accomplished could be, don't do more than you need to do, and, but make sure you get it right, which is what NIP has consistently pointed us to. So with that understanding, any objection to moving to seven? Okay, C seven. Who'd like to comment on that? Beth?
I think we could probably just end it after the word businesses to make it more concise.
Okay. Anybody else? I have a view on this, but I want to get everybody else in there too. Okay. This is the first one I saw that, while I understand the sentiment, I'm not sure it should be in a goal and objective statement for a short-term rental ordinance. It's a worthwhile goal for knowing to pursue every way they can. But it just, it was the first time I said, maybe these are going a little far afield from the purpose of this ordinance, so I offer that to see if it resonates with people, or we could just shorten it, as Beth suggested, and leave it there. NIP?
Here's a shocker. I agree with Rick.
All right, the meeting's over. Anybody else? That's what's called a victory, by the way. You should all be saying, declare a victory. Larry, and then Blake. Larry, you're muted. There you are.
Okay, I'm sorry. You're right. I want to agree with both NIP and Rick, so I, this is a red-letter day.
Blake?
Yeah, Blake Powell. I was just going to say it, I disagree with the point being made, but I think we can delete it altogether. It wouldn't change anything else we do with developing these regulations.
Okay, Lynn?
Yes, I do think it would change what we do with the regulations in terms of allowing, when we get to, are we going to allow so many days a year or so many days a month? In other words, you're going to try to spread that throughout the year, and in other regulations, they do, in terms of the benefits of having short-term regulations, they very much are paying attention to the economic benefit of it. This is the only economic benefit we have from it.
Actually, Rick Smith, we have the other one up above, I forget if it was C four or C five that talked about, you know, partial revenue to property, so that's a minor point. I mean, I don't want to cross words with you on that. Okay, is anybody persuaded by Lynn that it should stay in? Then I'm going to suggest that it should be omitted and live to fight another day. Okay, let's do that. Eight, C eight. Larry, then Beth?
Yeah, I mean, the first part is fine. I think the commensurate with the offense, that's, I don't know what that means. So I would recommend deleting it after promptly, and then take it up with the to be enforced by ZEO. Now, somewhere in here, the objective of recovery of the cost was above, and therefore some of that is for violations and some of that is for the permit fee, so I think we could do that in the details, not here as an objective.
So you're suggesting that read, ensure that complaints of unacceptable behavior are responded to promptly, period, to be enforced by ZEO?
Correct.
Okay. Beth?
I think we can delete it altogether. I feel like it's redundant by one of the ones that we already talked about with zoning enforcement.
That's a good point there, Rick Smith. All of this is enforced by the ZEO, such as we have the ability to do that. Yeah, well, so there's a proposal to just omit eight. Dana?
I agree with Beth. I think it's too granular for for this particular section of the document for the purpose.
Okay. Any further, any objection to deleting C eight? Seeing none. Lynn?
Yes, I'm not actually, I'm all right with deleting it, but as long as we do remember that this is important and that we do have to, we see this in other regulations where they are setting fees, and some of them are pretty eye-popping fees, and why is that? And so then we talk, when we talk to companies, the monitoring companies, they say, you know, it has to be stiff enough to get people's attention, because if it doesn't, it can be seen as a cost of doing business.
Okay. When I take these things out that we're saying delete, I'm going to collect them at the end of the document to say important considerations so that we don't lose track of anything that we said, they don't need to be in a list of objectives, but somebody thought they were important, so leave them in there as so we don't lose sight of them. Lynn? The final thought you had was, don't let the penalty, and I lost the train of thought. If Jen got it, I'm good. Did you have that point, Jen? You did, okay, thanks. All right. Okay, number nine. Larry?
I guess I should be the first one. It says, wow, I, that, that kind of goes too far. I understand the intent of it, but I think, you know, who's the decider on who's maintaining your residential character or not? I think if the intent is to say that our objective is to have the different classifications as we get to the details of the following, of the three following types of operators, I'd be okay with that. I just, that first sentence kind of makes me twitch.
Okay. Dana?
Dana, I agree with Larry, but I agree with him because there's no operational definition of help maintain the residential character.
Okay, others? This was the other one, well, these two, the one that Lynn had before that I just thought didn't fit. I think these things, at least A, B, and C, are the kinds of things we'll want to talk about as management measures or actual regulations, and we'll decide at the time whether the package that we put together has those kind of things in them or not. I didn't see them as objectives or a goal. So those nine, A, B, and C, I would prefer to move those down to a section that says important considerations for further discussion. NIP?
We had, in the discussions we had in zoning meetings and using the flip charts, we appeared to be headed toward a consensus on A, B, and C. And so in drafting goals, I was looking for some language that would point in that direction. I added A, B, and C in my goals to be clear in terms of what was meant by the limitation spelled out in nine, so that there would be a foundation for doing it later. I did not anticipate it would necessarily spell that all out in the goals, but I thought nine was important as a goal to reflect where we seem to be headed in our prior discussions, because it is, where we were headed is limited relative to all property owners being treated the same. And if we're going to limit it, I think the goal should make it clear why we're doing that.
Yeah.
As far as the first sentence goes, I feel like that sentence is already encapsulated in maybe paragraph one, I can't scroll up, I don't know, but the one that talks about, you know, preserving the residential character of the district as a whole. And I don't know how NIP feels about that, but I would agree also that that A, B, and C, I feel like that's more the actual ordinance itself as opposed to a goal or properly in the goal section.
Okay, others? Something Larry said triggered my mind, and then something NIP said reinforced it. Nine, not A, B, C, but just the central, the initial sentence of nine, it sounds very much like a condition. You can do short-term rental if you do this, maintain residential character or whatever the condition is, and it may have come out from a whiteboard session, that's what brainstorming does. It, you know, you come up with all sorts of ideas, but in reflection, maybe they aren't all as important to pursue as others. That one makes the hackles go up a little bit, that I don't think we should be conditioning whether you can rent your house on a short-term basis to how much you contribute to the community. It just, something makes me uncomfortable with that one, and I'm happy to debate it as management measures, but I wouldn't want to have a goal or an objective that said we're going to constrain people only, what if we put money in there instead of helping maintain the residential character? You can't be an SDR unless you give us $1,000, you know, then it would be patently absurd, and we'd all know that. This one isn't that egregious, but it still makes me a little pensive. NIP?
Now, go back to what I explained why I wrote nine, that in the discussions that the commission members had, extensive discussions in multiple meetings, we appeared clearly headed toward differentiating between various types of property owners. We were most sympathetic where it was an owner-operator onsite at the time the rental was occurring. Where then, the next level down was an owner-operator who just didn't happen to be there while the rental was going. And the third category was where it was the primary residence of the operator. And when we got beyond that, we, in those discussions, were significantly less sympathetic with the idea of allowing those property owners to operate short-term rentals. If we're going to continue down that path, I think somewhere in the goals, we need to make clear why we are making that differentiation. And nine was my attempt to do that. If people don't like that particular language, but we're still going to go down that path, I think we need to come up with other language that explains why we are differentiating. And Rick, I know in general, from your prior comments, you may not be comfortable with that idea, but that was clearly the consensus of the folks in the earlier discussions.
Others? Dana?
I get, I get what NIP's, Dana Oviedo, I get what NIP's saying, but at that point, I think we were making the mistake of confusing the overall aspirational goals with the actions that we would take if we were actually designing the regulations. And the problem with nine is, again, it conflates the overall aspirational goal, what we want to accomplish in knowing, you know, making sure its character is maintained stably with what we would actually do in order to do that, and so I would eliminate nine.
Others? Blake, and then Lynn, and then NIP?
Yeah, Blake Powell. I was going to say that I like NIP's explanation of nine a lot better than the wording of it right here. I think, you know, he makes a valid point, but I don't necessarily think that this in itself is a goal. The beginning, maintain the residential character of the district, I think that's already well-covered. I don't think you need to add anything else to it, but, you know, A, B, and C in and of themselves isn't the goal, but you could tie, we need to be able to tie each of those things to a goal if in fact we do include those stipulations in the regulation.
Lynn, and then NIP?
Yes, I agree. I think that this goal, as a goal, has been covered elsewhere, and I think that this is a way to achieve the goal. And on the whiteboard exercise, which by the way, I keep having trouble digging out those things, so I would really appreciate if you put the two sessions, I think that were into one document and get it to us, that would be greatly appreciated, because I do look at that quite a bit. But those also were the way, we were taking each component apart and looking at it in isolation from other components, and that was where we were going, but that wasn't cast in stone, given when we look at it in relation to other components. So I think by having the whiteboard with us as we go through the whiteboard summary, that will help remind us of where we were, because it has been a bit of Of, of where we were, because it has been a bit of time where we were, what we were concluding, and that goes into our discussion of how you achieve the goals. This is not a goal.
Yep.
Yeah, for those who don't like nine. But philosophically agree with restricting. The permits to. Various categories of owner operators. I challenge them to figure out how you're going to justify. Those later restrictions back to. The goals if the goals are so broadly stated. That it's not clear that there are going to be distinctions in how we treat various categories of owner operators.
So if you agree with restricting permits, what goal will get us there? Can I ask for a drafting committee of one or two people, not a quorum, but. To come up with different words to capture Nip's idea? Dana.
I'd like to volunteer for. Trying to put together a one paragraph purpose that incorporates all this stuff if. If you guys would let me attempt it.
So volunteer to prepare a statement of purpose for the whole exercise. Right? Any disagreement with that? Okay, and we'll treat that as. If everyone agrees here, we'll treat it as a preliminary draft, not for distribution so that it can go back and forth a few times as a staff draft. So that we kind of get a sense for how it feels, much like we did this exercise. Any disagreement with that? Lynn.
I'm not sure. I'm getting a little lost of where we are so that now Dana's going to replace this whole thing that we just went through with a paragraph. No.
No, he's talking about a statement of purpose, Rick Smith, a statement of purpose for the whole exercise. We still have to figure out. If anyone's gonna.
Okay. I, I'm with you now. Thanks.
Who's handed? I see waving, but not the blue icon. Okay, do we have a volunteer for C, C nine? Okay, the last thing I heard about C nine was omit it and there were a couple of people who said that and. And Nip thought we needed to have something there that captures. The concept he's talking about. So what's your pleasure? Last word was, and Larry?
I, I think the, what Dana just volunteered to do. Could take care of the question on the table because the purpose certainly can cover the fact that. There are differences in. Types of owners, you know, and then been a better way of saying it. So I think if that's the case as a very high level. This then becomes in the, in the nitty-gritty details. I mean, I agree with. With Nip that, that we had established a set of criteria or different criterias based upon the ownership. Type of ownership and we're going to continue to do that as we get into the actual detailed writing. So as the objectives level, I think I kind of, kind of changed my mind. It says, yeah, we can eliminate nine. And this, the, the purpose of this number nine would get incorporated into a revised purpose statement at the top.
Okay, everybody agree with that?
No.
No, who? Nip, no?
Yeah, I, I disagree on a couple of points. One, I don't want to see it go away without us figuring out logically. What we're going to base future decisions. Related to different categories of ownership. We have to be, and we can go back to what John Casey said, if we're going to do that. There's no question that that is going to raise. The risk of being challenged by the categories that we don't. Allow as broadly as we allow some other categories. So we better have. The basis for that clearly established from the beginning. So it ought to be tied back to the goals. People don't like the way I phrased it. That's fine, but come up with something else. Just don't get rid of the idea. That's point number one. Point number two, I don't like. Multi-sentence paragraphs that try and explain what you're trying to do. I think most people, when they start to read those things, their eyes glaze over and they don't pick up. The individual components that are buried within it. I, if we're going to have multiple goals. Rather than try and combine them all into a paragraph. For me, and it's probably the engineer in me, I like separate bullet points. So each one is standing out there clearly on its own.
Okay. All right. I see your point, but I don't see anybody able to rewrite nine to, and then debate it here and now. So. Let's see what Dana comes up with. Let's see if something in that leaps out where we can capture the essence of what you would like to have in it. It's not going to happen with ten people looking at a screen in my opinion, so. Any disagreement? Let Dana take a crack at that and we'll see what he comes up with. These things are not be hard and fast driving us forever. By the way, these are our draft goals to guide us for now. Which means they're subject to change. Lynn and then Nip. Lynn, unmute or.
Yes, Lynn Marshall, I would just point out that I think again, that this isn't quite the right. That this is important to keep in mind and we need to all have the whiteboard exercises like in, in one, one document that we can. Continue to reference and that this, it's not going away. It's under, under important considerations. It's still there. But it, what it's bringing out is one, one, we have different, what we haven't really done is, is done, we've looked at each of, of different elements. Separately, we hadn't looked at how they combine. So you, you know, the elements are. So that you don't get too much activity. You can limit the number of licenses, limit the number of activity for each license and limit the type of owner. And, and so we're not getting into those other means, you know, in great detail here. So. We also have some issues, you know, and as we're putting this forward, when, when we ask about the tier description of residents. John Casey was saying that onsite owners only, it's not a problem to. Require those, it's easy to have a rationale because renters are less likely to create a nuisance, he said. If the owner or, or designate is onsite. But when you get into the, the other tier description of residents. You've got to have a really good reason because in, with the zoning, you've got to treat everybody the same. So if we're going to go down that tiered approach, we've got to really come up with a good reason for doing it. I just.
Good point. Good reminder. Yep. All right, so. Nine will look for a substitution that is more satisfactory. Ten, C ten. Anybody view on that? Larry.
It's a tactic, not an objective.
Yeah, I, I looked at it, Rick Smith, I looked at it as a management measure. So tactic management measure. Others? Nip.
Yeah, I'm okay with taking it out.
Okay. Okay, so ten is out. All right. So we'll need to do some redrafting. Wait to see what Dana has, comes up with. So for now, everybody comfortable with leaving these the way they are. The way we've just amended them. Okay. Next item on the agenda, discussion of draft decision document. Might be helpful on this one if. Okay. If I explain my view of, of how this thing ought to be used, this is the preliminary draft, not for public. Distribution. If we were to. Lynn, you want to say something before?
Before, before you get into that, this would be a good time for a five-minute break.
Oh, how's everybody feel about that? So moved. The commissioner's edict. Five minutes, come back a little before ten of.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, good point. But yeah, Rick has gotten advice from John Casey. That we can get away with doing it. And the, the next major.
You were looking for Larry and Blake. There they are. How did you, Blake, how did you blank your screen?
You can just turn the video off down lower, lower left, probably on yours.
Oh, stop video. Yeah, okay. Okay. All right, we're all back. As I was teeing this up, I thought it might be helpful for you to know. What I think we would do with it and then that may influence your thinking in, in debating the point. And this is. The discussion is whether to use the draft decision document as our working draft moving forward. I didn't get any returns on the invitation for things to be added that might have been inadvertently omitted. So I would give us a, you know, five, six, seven days time to get those things in. So that the document has everything in it that people think ought to be in there for discussion sake. Give me a few days to edit, consolidate it, and then have another meeting a couple of weeks from now. At which time it would be posted and it would then become a public discussion document. After that, we'd have to start moving through it and by vote, by a majority. Decide if something ought to be out or changed. So that we're actually forming what our final proposals ought to be. And I think those ought to be. By a majority, not just one person's view, but adding things in, I think should be anybody who thinks. There's something that was left out or that in hindsight, they think, yeah, that should be in. I don't think we should constrain that by a vote. So that's just my sense of how we would move forward with it, but the debatable point today is whether you think we ought to or not. But the debatable point today is whether you think we ought to or not use it as that type of a draft. So have at it. Beth?
I'm in favor of using it.
Okay. With that strategy of moving forward, that timeline, yeah, okay. All right. Others? Dana?
I'm confused. So if we, if we move, if we quote move forward with it, what does that imply? Does that imply that the draft is made public?
It would be made, Rick Smith, it would be made public after this period of making sure it has everything in there that people think ought to be in there. Doesn't mean we can't add something later, but rather than putting a document out that somebody says, yeah, there's two or three things I think ought to be in there, I want to give us time to get those things in there. But under the timeline I proposed, in a period of about two weeks, those ideas would be in, they'd be edited into the document, that document would then get posted as the draft decision document, which would become public in the sense that it, you know, when you talk about a document under the governor's new rules for these remote meetings, when it's a document, you have to have the document posted to the town website before you have the meeting. It's an arcane kind of a rule, it's part of the allowance that lets us do Zoom meetings, but it comes at the cost of making sure that step is also done. And you just can't come to a meeting and drop a bombshell on people, if you will. So that's what they said in the rules, so that's what we did. The only reason, by the way, I didn't worry about the goal document that we ended up working from, even though that hadn't been posted, all of what's in it was posted. So there were no concepts that, that didn't already get posted on the website with the agenda. So, so I, does that satisfy the confusion? Dana?
Yes, I think so. So if I understand it better, the, the document would be public. And I'm just trying to figure out what the advantage is of releasing a document to the public that has so many options in it, number one. And number two, do we want to release a document that's that diverse? And open ourselves up to a huge amount of public angst and comment when we're not even sure that, that that's the particular way that we're going.
Rick Smith, certainly there will be public angst, no matter when we surface things, but we can't discuss it until it becomes public. In other words, we can't push and pull at it and make changes to it without having it made public because of these governors' remote meeting rules. Yeah, and you raise a good point, everybody should be aware of it. No matter when we begin to surface our actual ideas for doing things, the pushback is going to be enormous. People who want to do things and see regulations coming their way, they will be loud. And we just have to anticipate it and roll with it as long as we think we're doing the right thing for no ink in large, and, and that's basically going to be the balancing act we're responsible to strike, and that we'll be trying to strike over the next few months. So my view is that as long as you know that's going to happen anyway, you may as well start discussing what you would have in a decision document. And yes, this will be longer than anybody's final, I'm sure, because as you know, it's got options and different ways of approaching things, and we'll probably add more as we debate rather than immediately start taking things out. It'll be a clunky document for a while, but in order to start to get towards decisions, that's what we have to do, in my opinion. Nip? You're muted, Nip, wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, go ahead, start over.
Two points, this is Nip Tanner. If this is going to be a document that internally, we are going to spend time, you mentioned possibly a couple of weeks, looking at revising and drafting, but it's going to be the core of what eventually goes public. I think it should go public at this time. I am not comfortable with having all that kind of work go on behind the scenes without the folks who are listening today and all the members of the public at large having access to it. That's point number one. Point number two, we, the commission was on a path of setting priorities and getting a sense of what we wanted to regulate and how we wanted to regulate. But you chose to shortcut that system and create this document rather than let that process play out. I was wondering if you could explain to us why you chose to do that? Not clear to me.
Yeah.
What happened?
I'd be happy to, because I think it's always better to work from a straw man document, because the definition of that is you find the disadvantages and you kick them out, and you find things that could be made better, and you leave them in and amend them. We spent a lot of time over the last six months talking about ideas, but very little got down on paper. And I always think it's beneficial to work from something rather than nothing. That's the short answer, I can expound more, but you know, doesn't need to be any longer than that. It's my preference for how you start out to make decisions, is have something in front of you. Yep?
Yeah, it's a, it's a very different idea of how to proceed than brainstorming and consensus building, which is what we were working at before. I guess you've taken the prerogative as chairman to try and push us down the path that you prefer as opposed to the path that we were on while you were absent.
Anybody else? Okay. That was a loaded couple of sentences, let me just say this. I've said in every way I can think of on the cover page of this thing that everything is open to amendment. So I'm not trying to force anybody into what decisions they make. I'm trying to force us all into starting to make the decisions instead of talking about ideas. I guess I'll leave it at that. Other thoughts? Lynn? Yeah, wait a minute, Lynn, you're muted.
I got it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have spent a lot of hours thinking about this, about process and how best to move forward. And the, as I said, the one thing that we haven't really done is see how these things interrelate. Because you're in, because in limiting, you're going to have to limit one factor or the other. And these different factors, you know, limiting the number of places that can have licenses, or limiting the amount of activity per license, or the type of owner, those all interplay with each other. And, and so in order, you almost have to go down as a have a, you know, have three straw men, like one if you do this predominantly, then how do the others factors put in? What if you rely on this kind of element predominantly, then how do the others fit in to accomplish your goals? And then you do the third one. Well, that ends up being a pretty long process unless we were really doing it consistently all the way through. And then at the end of it, you've still got to decide. So I, I was concerned that by make, going through a document where the decisions that are made at the first could drive the sentence, the, the decisions that are made later on. And I've looked at the document and I think that we could go through the document, use that as, use that as the basis. As long as we proceed through it carefully and say, oh, this is one of those places where I can't decide until we decide some other things at the same time. So for example, if you ask me, how many nights do you think it'd be all right? Well, I don't know how many, how many houses are going to be allowed to do it? Can everybody have a license or they're limited number? Or is it every type of owner, is no restriction on the type of owner or not? I can't tell you those things without the other. So there would be points in there where we might have to stop and broaden it and say, we really, this can't be made in isolation, you need to think of everything. So the, I like the process and I like the idea. I mean, we talked about, or John Casey talked about when we're drafting something like this, we, in fact, become the staff working behind the scenes. So I think that's fine. Rick had a draft document. I don't want any of my, and we're not discussing it yet. So any of my draft documents, I don't really want them out for the public to see. You know, I like the idea of we have input, we prefer, say, no, did you kind of mess this up? Or are there things that should be added? And then he gets, he gets to make this into a better document. At that point, but before we can just, and then I'm, I'm fine with letting that document lead us through the process, if we go slowly and carefully, and if we're looking back, we take time to look back to the goals. Then after we've gotten all the way through the document, I think we should stop and say for each goal, how did we accomplish this? Not as a big lengthy exercise, but just point to we did it here, here, here. Okay, does that really address this goal? Did we nail it? And then we might want to say, okay, is this too, too big, too complex? How are we going to simplify it without weakening the goals? And I think if we go through that process, we'll end up with a, with a good document. And of course, we've got other, we've got other things in there too, like, you know, the complexities as we go along are like, oh, do we need to break this out for different parts of the fire district? But that, that's part of this slow, careful process as we move through it.
Okay, Dana?
I have a question for Nip. I've read through the document. I'm just curious what Nip's opinion is, is it, is it a straw man? Or is it a document that seems like somebody's trying to drive the discussion? He's included a lot of options. He's asking for more input to be included in it. And so I guess what I'm asking is, is your objection still because, is your objection because he, because Rick's trying to drive, to drive the discussion?
As I've said multiple times before, I am looking at the process being driven by, down this path that Rick is recommending. I am guided by advice that I got from a lawyer that I worked with many times in my career. That if there's going to be a document that's subject for negotiations, you want to write the first draft and have everybody else talk about your draft. From our earlier discussions, I have, it's clear to me that Rick has some strong feelings about some of the options that we've talked about. And I can't help but think that in some ways, perhaps subconscious, that will have colored decisions he made in drafting it. So that's, that's a general comment. The other comment that I would have in terms of process, the point we were at with the flip charts before we stopped and now have had that process pushed aside, we were focusing on, our discussion, our, our last discussions focused on some very high priority issues. Specifically, are we going to differentiate between categories of owner operators? And if so, how are we going to differentiate that? And where does that lead us in terms of later sub-decisions? But that seemed to, where all that previous discussion led us to was that was the most important thing for us to figure out next. And once we figured that out, then other things would logically flow from that. You know, it, it seems to me that if we go forward with Rick's document, that we're going to be starting at a very different point in our decision making. Eventually, presumably, we'll get to all the same points, but in a, in a different logical order.
Others? Dana?
Go ahead, if anybody else had their hand raised, take them first.
I didn't see anybody, that's why. Yeah, I don't see anybody.
So Nip, what would, if, if we decided not to take up the draft document, what would be the process from there?
Well, a possibility would be to go back to where we were with the flip charts and say, okay, we were partway down this path in terms of differentiation on ownership types, let's continue that discussion and see where that leads us. That is a possibility.
Larry?
Well, I think the part of the, the direction here is how did we make progress? And I think we're, we're coming up on two years of working through this, where we've actually had a completed document and went out to the public and had the debates and we pulled it back. The, my observation is the amount of new thoughts or ideas, there've been very few over the last, we've had a bunch. It's getting less and less, the point of diminishing returns. Therefore, I think that going through a consolidation of all the material we've already done in the purpose of a draft document is a way to move the ball forward. And my, I guess my final thought on this is the purpose of the chairperson of an organization is to provide direction and leadership. And if there's an issue or concern, there's a vote and the majority rules and we move forward. So I think we ought to kind of, I think Robert threw his order, can I move for a question on to use the draft or not? Oh, I guess I can, because I'm not an alternate. Could one of the formal members call, call for a motion on this?
Blake, I'd rather have everybody comment first.
That's what I'm, yeah, I have a comment, I'm not. Um, you know, back to Dana's point, so what are the options that we're really debating here?
Is that a question for Dana?
I mean, we've got one option right here. Nip's discussed a possibility of an option, but you know, before we rule this draft in or out, what, what are our options?
I'll take a crack at that. If we pursue the draft document, at the time we get to the things that Nick is talking about as being, I would use the word the thorniest of the things facing us and maybe the ones that have the most possibility of being influential on the, the final decision. We can discuss those, maybe it would take a whole meeting at the time to do that. But to me, it doesn't subordinate. But to me, it doesn't subordinate the need to have a document that lays out everything we can think of laying out. So we can get a feel for it. As long as John says we're okay using it as a staff draft. You know, I'm fine with that, but there comes a time when the thing is, needs to hit the street for us to be able to talk about it in a meeting like this. Or at a face to face, if it comes to the end of May and we're open for business again. So I would say either the approaches and Nip, correct me if I'm, I don't characterize this right. The approaches would be use the document and deal with those issues you raised at the time we're debating, moving through the document or debate those things now and put them into a document later.
But why are they mutually exclusive? If, if the issues, and I don't know that they are, but if the issues are already in this document, we just prioritize them. We go to them first.
We could do that. The issue is, is held out as, as a placeholder because as Nip points out, you know, that's one of those places where we hadn't really come to a good solid conclusion. We had a lot of ideas and but it didn't, it didn't have as much clarity as some of the other issues. Nip?
I, I don't agree with the characterization that had some discussion and not much clarity. In the last portion of a regular zoning meeting, we talked about it. Actually, it was the last two, the tail end of the last two discussions. We were very clearly wrestling with the question of differentiation of how we would treat different classes of ownership and seemed to be headed toward a hierarchical approach to that. And if we had continued that process, that would have you know, resulted in something. I mean, we're getting, we weren't just throwing things around. We were approaching a consensus. We haven't gotten there yet, but we were approaching one. So it seemed to me the logical thing would be to continue that. As Blake suggested, and we can either do it with a blank sheet of paper or you know, before we get together again, take a look at what's in your draft and see if that in any way comes close to helping us frame those decisions. So that we can make them because you know, the, the earlier process seemed to indicate, we thought that was the most important decision in front of us and we were starting to reach consensus on it.
Anybody else? Dana?
Here's the reason I was uncomfortable with, with the flip chart. And I don't know if I can explain it adequately or not, but we seem to be dealing with a bunch of actionable proposals that presupposed that the way that we dealt, that presupposed that an alternative method, and I'll just call it out there. The alternative method being, let's just say, limited STRs wouldn't take place. So, I mean, if, if Rick's, if Rick's document is truly a straw man and if he's truly allowing other, other opinions to come in, it may be a good idea to, to try something different. I hate, I hate to say it. But that's, that's where my thoughts are going at this point.
What is the something different you suggest?
Me?
Yeah. Well, you said if the document is a straw man, maybe it's time to try something different. I don't know what the difference is.
Maybe it's, maybe it's time to try something different like the straw man.
Oh, I see.
I heard, I heard Blake say something else, or maybe not, a third alternative, but I don't think he brought up a third, third alternative yet. He was searching for it.
Yeah. Well, I certainly want to make sure we have a full discussion of the points that Nip is making. And it would seem to me that if we're all willing to have a meeting in the next couple of weeks, two weeks from now, or if you know that's the topic and that's the only topic you want to talk about, maybe do a meeting next week. That's one of the places in the document, it's very thin. There weren't a lot of good ideas because it's complicated and, and I couldn't figure out a way to try and capture what everybody had said as showing on the flip charts. But I'm amenable to having, the next time we talk about the meat of the issue, we should talk about that one. Let's, let's say that. And then the question is whether there is additional value to have this document out where we can freely talk back and forth. That is a couple of weeks from now after we do the add-on or unless people agree with Nip that you should just put it out right now. I would prefer to make it better with the staff draft concept and then put it out. But Nip had said, you know, he'd rather have it out right away if we're going to use it, but he'd prefer we not use it, I guess. So do people agree that the next topic we ought to deal with on a, I don't know how to frame it even, the whole issue of the different categories of licenses and Larry?
I, I think the, the thing is today, we reviewed section two of the draft document. It kind of went through that, the purpose, goals and objectives. And we spent two, two hours on that. I think then you pick, I think you're right, pick another section. The priority section would be just what Nip said, hey, here are the, the different classifications. Pick that. We don't have to go in order down this thing is I think you pick the priority, you pick a section, you work on that section. And we go to the next one. I mean, that will progress us through. And once we've gone through that once, because they're all staff kind of related, now you got a complete one that's been gone through once. Then I think you could publish it. But I think publishing now is just going to cause more harm than good. So I, I think that's a, maybe it's a middle ground of going after that next priority item in the context of the draft that you have, and then continue to update the draft.
I'm going to talk to John this week and see how far into the process we can use this whole staff draft concept. I don't mind waiting a couple of weeks and, and getting more into it, but eventually something's in my view, going to have to be out there for us to chill on as opposed to discussions. And frankly, I think we need to move beyond whiteboards because I forget who it was who brought the, the comment out, but they're great when you have a day long meeting and you get together and you brainstorm, you put things up and then everybody gets a handful of colored dots and you put up your sticky dots and the end of the day you walk away and you actually made a consensus based decision. We're not doing that. We're doing that over the period of several months and as much as I like what's in the whiteboard summaries, they don't give me any context to know what people really meant when they said those few words in a bullet. Part of that was why I thought, well, if we put a document out there with alternatives written out, so you know what it would look like as a regulation. We may be better off deciding, at least we'll know what's intended and we can change that if that's not the intent. So options are to hold that next meeting whenever we, we decide to and deal with the issues that Nip has, has championed here. Then see whether the document is ready for prime time. Or just get everybody's suggestions of things they think need to be on paper in there. I'll make the edits and have that available to be posted two weeks from now. And those things don't exclude one another. We could have the document out and have the first section we discussed being the layers of, of permits. So how does that sound as starting to frame where we need to go? Lynn?
Lynn Marshall, I'm, I'm hearing, I'm hearing that 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 part of the, of your draft document was thin. And so I'm, one, one thing is to would be to have someone, when, when they're giving their suggestions, you know, for, for that document, maybe Nip, to actually try to expand that part of it or to give you, Rick, suggestions for how to expand it.
Yeah, that's where I want to talk to John to, to see how, I know he said that in towns that have full-time staff, they commonly comment back and forth on a draft, staff draft. It, it's not just you put it out there and you can't comment, but you can add things to it. It's more, more accepting of having people members comment back to revise the draft. I want to see how far we can take that. Because you don't want to get close to the point where you've made all your decisions and the public hasn't had a chance to, to see it. And I want to stay far away from that boundary. But if we're trying to make a preliminary draft of thoughts and ideas, the best it can be when it finally hits the street, then I'm not against having that next meeting. Have, have the things that Nip is talking about be that agenda item. Then make the document that much better. So maybe you put it out on the street three weeks from now instead of two. Nip?
As an alternative, if that section is relatively thin, but we want to add some meat to it. Why can't we publish just that section as part of the agenda for the next meeting? And say that there'll be input from the, or, or we collect input in the meantime, from the commission members related to that section. And then as you did today, have that as part of the agenda that only has to be published shortly before the meeting, but at least it's all out there. And just focus our attention on that section of the draft, not worry about publishing the rest of it or editing the rest of it.
So pull out that section. Solicit ideas from people on what it ought to say. Hold the main part of the document aside, don't publish that right away. Have that next meeting and then put that section into the document. For then eventually being available for the public to see and then for us to be able to debate the whole thing. Is that?
Well, the purpose at the next, Nip Tanner, the purpose at the next meeting would be to discuss the input that you got for that draft. And for us to make whatever decisions we're ready to make related to that section of the draft. But with it out there in public before our meeting so that we can, you know, the public knows what we're talking about and, and why.
Okay, now I'm confused. Pull the permitting section out. Solicit ideas from commissioners and alternates on what it ought to look like. So we have that module. When is that put back into the main document and the document posted on the website for public inspection?
My suggestion is that we focus our attention on that section. And make that the, probably the only necessary agenda item for our next meeting, assuming as Larry pointed out, it's likely to take a while to chew our way through it and you know, attach the updated version of that section to the agenda for the next meeting. So that it's out there in public and then in the meeting, we talk about it and make whatever decisions we're ready to make related to it. Once we assume we go through a process similar to what we went through today, we end up with a draft that's closer to a final than we will be at the start of the meeting, then it can go back into the document. The bigger document and then at, at some point, you need to collect updates and input for the broader document. When you're ready, the whole thing can, can go public.
Okay, I guess my confusion is this envisions two meetings after today. The first meeting is talk about that essential section. That's, you do that a week from now or two weeks from now. We talk about that section, we make it to our satisfaction as a draft. Then we put it back in the document and publish the document for discussion at the second meeting, the meeting after that first meeting.
Well, the, you know, it's, it's one bite of the elephant at a time. You know, I'm just, I'm just thinking about the first bite of the elephant. We, the, in terms of when we're ready to go public with the complete document, I think will depend on when we provide the time for people to provide input to you and for you to re, redraft the whole document. That's separate from us being able to proceed with just dealing with what I view as the top priority questions and decisions.
Okay, I'm still trying to write it down so I can recast it to everyone and have them, have everyone agree. So the agenda for the next meeting is all of those permit related issues. After that meeting, assuming we have come to agreement. I take that section, put it back in the document. At the same time, I've solicited everybody to say what else, what's missing that is an inadvertent omission or something you think in retrospect should be in there. Those two activities can kind of occur simultaneously. Once we get to the end of, after the meeting, two weeks from now, both of those products are folded into the document, then it's published on the website for the next meeting. Does that make sense to people?
I'm not, I'm not following you exactly. Are we talking about pulling out all of section four? Are we talking about specifically just?
I, I don't want to talk about the document.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Rephrase.
Okay.
Are we talking about, talking about just that type of owner? In terms of how long they're here, whether it's owner occupied or not? Or are we talking about also limiting on the number of licenses and limit on the amount of activity allowed at each license?
I think we're talking about both because as you've pointed out, they're so interrelated.
Okay, so that's, I just wasn't clear. Okay. But
Types.
But here, here's something I would say about that. So we have a document where two of those, the number of licenses and the limit on the amount of activity allowed in each license, those are, it, it was only the, there's no question about whether there's enough there for discussion where, but it's the type of owner where there wasn't enough there for discussion. So shouldn't we first have more there for discussion before we start discussing? If we're going.
Lynn, I think we said we would that before the, we had the, it's Nip Tanner, before we had that discussion about that section, that Rick would get input to beef up what's in this mysterious draft that nobody but us has seen. But when it, it would, it would, the beefed up version would be part of the agenda for the next meeting. And we'd be talking, you know, as we did today where Rick had solicited goals and they were all put together in a document. And then we went through that document as the agenda for our meeting today. And then we went through that document as the agenda for our meeting today. My recommendation, suggestion is that we do a similar process related to this question on. Classes of operators and restrictions that would apply. Differently for different. Categories. And that. We focus, you know, we can give our input to Rick about that before that meeting. It'd be published before the meeting and then we talk about it in the next meeting.
I just want to make sure at some point I understand. Where I'm supposed to be providing input and where we're not doing it yet, because I want to focus all my attention on what we're next doing, that's all.
Yep. Somebody is going to have to volunteer to be the drafter of this beefed up section because. I frankly have my mind wrapped around all the other things we're doing and I don't have a good sense of. Where people who are passionate on this subject. Think it ought to, what it ought to say. I don't have that same sense, so I'm not the one to. To solicit ideas on that one and beef up a section and have it bear any resemblance to what. Uh, Nip or Dana or Lynn might want it to say on the issue of permits and permit types and permit limits. So somebody is gonna have to volunteer for a working group of two. So it doesn't violate quorum rules. It's Rick Smith and. Get me something in a week that then can. Be the basis or, you know, depends, we got to decide when the next meeting will be. You know, if that's going to take more than a week's time, then the next meeting should be two weeks from now. And I don't mind holding the. The draft decision document back for another couple of weeks to make people more comfortable that that module. Says more of what they, they think that it ought to say and that we then go to a meeting and debate those points. I mean, whether we publish the thing soon or we publish it in a couple of weeks makes no difference to me. As long as we start to focus our attention on a document that leads us to decisions. So who would like to volunteer for this? This is what will be called the eight hundred pound gorilla on our shoulders, by the way. Okay, I don't see any volunteers. Nip is volunteering or you have a comment?
Volunteering and also making a comment that, uh, in terms of our next meeting, I cannot do next Saturday, got a couple of family birthdays.
Okay. Well, this is going to take some of your time in addition, and I would not want to rush this, so. Maybe the best thing to do is have the meeting two weeks from now. And that gives you a good week or more to. Put things down the way you think they ought to be for us to, to look at, at a meeting on the sixteenth of May. Everybody comfortable with that? Nip?
Just be careful, you're giving the. Pen to the person who appears to feel most strongly about this issue.
That's okay, that's the best person to draft it, in my view. As long as you understand that we're not obligated to take everything you say, just like I'm not.
Of course you are.
Just like I'm not obligated on the other document. I'm obligated to listen, everybody can change whenever people want it changed and that's.
I can be quite Trumpian in this regard, I only accept praise and adulation.
Hold that thought. Okay, thank you for volunteering because this won't be an easy chore. So I'll. Talk to John on this whole concept, but I'm sure this part's okay, one person drafting ideas is always in bones. So are we comfortable that we'll postpone the publication of the, the. Document that we've been wondering about? Until we see the results of the meeting two weeks from now on this module on permit types and permit limits. Everybody agreed with that? Okay, see no disagreement, good. So that meeting will be by Zoom on May sixteenth, same time of day, okay for people, ten o'clock? Okay. See now. Two other things on the agenda, I don't know how far you want to go with these. The issues raised in correspondence since January twenty twenty. That all, this is Rick Smith, sorry. That came about because of my self inflicted wound on ideas after the meeting in January. Uh, I cured the defect in the legal terms by doing what John told me to do. The. Issue though spawned. Some of the debate we've had over what can we do outside meetings and what can't we? And it ended up with two or three emails being sent for purposes of discussion by the commission. They're all. Two to four months old now and if anyone wants to speak about the thing they submitted, which was. Myself, Nip and Dan and Lynn. Feel free, this would be the time, I'm not going to talk about what I submitted. It speaks for itself and I no longer even hold all of those views, as I had said at the time, they're kind of. You know, they were off the cuff reactions to, to the meeting as opposed to hard and fast positions, so. If I want to debate one of those issue, issues. In a subsequent meeting, I'll do it at the time that that issue arises and not because of what was written in January. So that's my view on my part of it, uh, leave it aside and then it's up to Nip and Lynn of how much they'd like to talk or what they'd like to say. Uh, Nip, you're, you got the yellow ring around you, did, you want to go first or? Anyway.
Uh, Nick Tanner, I'm not sure I got the yellow ring around me, but. I'm happy to adjourn the meeting at this point.
Okay, Lynn?
And drop any discussion of mine.
I think everything else that I wrote in there is like so far, you know, removed, it's no longer relevant, but Nick, except for the one thing, Nick. Wait, are, are you still willing to, to combine all the whiteboard? Comments into one document and get that out to us?
I never volunteered to do that.
Oh, I thought you did.
Lynn, you volunteered him, but he never responded that I know of.
Oh. Okay.
But that's easy, I will.
Will you do that?
I. They, they are separate documents, I will put them all into a document, but I won't do any editing.
That's fine.
Have a lot of reading to do, okay, hold on.
Okay, um, I heard a rather tepid but well received motion to adjourn, is that formalized by anyone? Or, well, I don't want to rush that, has anybody got anything else they want to add to what we've been talking about? So that we don't leave and have, okay, Blake and Dana.
Blake, you're muted.
Yeah, okay.
So we had a nice healthy discussion about goals and objectives today, so what are we doing with all this? We have a bunch of editing to do, there's some loose ends hanging out there, but really before we move on to any other topic, I think we need to. Solidify this, have a consensus on what we're doing because it's going to drive the rest of the discussions.
I, I made. Copious notes and I'll probably listen to this again all over and, and try and. Edit and capture what everybody has said, I didn't see at the final analysis that many people had. We concluded everything with, with consensus. So I don't think it'll be that difficult to do. Jen, I know is taking good notes there and if I miss something, maybe she'll catch it or Christine. So, yeah, but I don't suggest and I don't think you are that we have to see that before we proceed with the next meeting. Because, you know, we'll be forever, we kind of know what the goals and objectives are going to say based on today and how the words actually look. You know. Isn't as influential as knowing that we have a very similar mindset after today.
Well, I, I'd like to see it before the next.
Well, I'll send it to you, but I'm saying I, I don't know how it, it. I hope you're not suggesting that we not have the next meeting until we see that document.
No, no, no.
Okay, good, alright.
But also, you know, in terms of your. Draft decision document, I mean, there's a whole section in there on goals and objectives and. Does this overwrite everything that's in there too?
Absolutely, that, that's the whole point of the straw man that. After the result of today substitutes for what was in that document. And, and I suspect every other measure that we deal with going down the road. Whether I agree or not, the will of the majority is going to determine what's in the document. Nip?
This is Nick Tanner, I think Dana had his hand up before mine.
Yes, he did. Yes, Dana and then Nip.
Dana Oviad. What section, but hang on a little bit, what section was Nip going to be, uh, to work on?
I don't want to refer to a document that's not been posted, it's.
And I'm sorry.
Issue of permit. How I wrote it in my notes.
Permit types and permit limits?
Permit. Permit types and permit limits.
Okay. And my second question is, do you still want me to draft a section on the mission statement of the purpose?
I think that would be helpful. In. Forming our views. It may not be helpful in a regulatory sense when we finally go out to a public hearing. But it'll be helpful if somebody ever sues us and they say, why'd you do that? We'll have a couple of things, you're going to have. The statement of purpose, goals and objective, objectives and. Potentially some justification for the thornier measures where we agree that. Uh, our justification for. Position A is this short paragraph, I mean, all of that, and Lynn mentioned that before, it was one of the things John said. We need to have real good reasons for what we do and that should be understood, but it may be more so because. You know, in the litigious world we find ourselves in. You know, people may want to challenge and we may want to prevail and, and that will be guided by how. Effect of our justification reads.
Okay, I was just trying to make sense of what, what Blake was saying.
What part of what he was saying? He wanted to see the revised goals and objectives. And they substitute for what's in that. Preliminary draft. And what am I missing?
And we'll have them at the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll get them out prior to the meeting. I mean, I can attach them to the agenda too, that's not a bad idea. Okay, uh, Nip?
Yeah, Nick Tanner, uh, in addition to the redrafting. Of the. Objectives that we talked about today. As we mentioned earlier in the discussion. I think they need to be prioritized. So they, they represent some trade offs. As you. Compare one against the other and I, I just think they ought to be, uh, we at some point. Need to have some discussion and get them in the revised edited ones in priority order. So it's to the extent that we need to refer back to them down the road. That it's clear which. Of them is more important than others.
Okay, that may be a. A corner of the agenda two weeks from now, I just looked down the list and my notes have it, it's down to seven. So whether we prioritize them or not, you won't lose sight of one because it's all going to be on one page, so. If prioritization suggests. What you think is more important than all the other things, then that's a valid or valuable exercise to go through, but it probably won't take very long because it's only seven. Items, so. Probably be a whole lot less than.
Yep.
Part of this meeting.
Particularly if we've seen it ahead of time. We can visually have made our rough.
Yeah.
Personal decisions.
Okay, yeah, and actually everybody should do that and, and that will economize on the time we spend on it. Okay, uh, anybody else, anything else for the good of the order? Larry?
Uh, just a quick point on logistics. The original meeting, whoops, let me get this out. Uh, if the meeting from April twenty first is out there. In the, uh, in the YouTube universe, you'll see it on your screen. When we're done with this one, you'll, it'll be a second one on here. Uh, so that everything, everyone can go out and see it and Rick, you can go out and look at it as well. Uh, and transparency, everyone's going to see everything, right?
Yep.
So, so I just wanted to point that out to everyone.
Okay, uh, yeah, Larry has been doing a lot of work for us behind the scenes with the town to. Figure out the most efficient way to post things that are most transparent and responsive to the public that may want to. Sit through and see what the thing looked like and. He and the town's IT guy came up with this. Way of doing it, so all of our taped meetings will be out there in sequence and you just go look for whichever one you want and. View to your heart's content, so thank you very much for that, that was, that was a big, it was looking like it was going to be very comprehensive. Complicated and that they weren't going to let us do some of the things we needed to do until they put their heads together and figured this out, so good job on that. Okay, any other subject for the good of the order? Uh, motion to adjourn. So moved second, Beth and Blake, uh, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Raising hands, yeah, okay, I'm going to call that unanimous, yep. Okay, thank you all very much, I know it's long, but, uh, we're making progress, I appreciate it, thanks.